Testing, testing, one, two. We got it? Jesse, we good? All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it's Thursday, May 23rd, 2019. The city council is out of executive session. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item is always a pledge to our flag. Councilmember Huffaker, would you lead us?
My pleasure.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. A roll call this evening, we just have the four council members, so we'll note the absences of councilmembers Bailey, Esparsa, and Harold. First item on the agenda today are the consent items, which includes the agenda of vouchers and the minutes from the previous meeting and the hiring of a special prosecutor.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. And also make a motion for the city council to approve the special city attorney-prosecutor agreement with Weed, Graff, Stra, and Associates, Inc., PS, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve this evening's agenda, vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and approve the mayor's signature on the contract for special city attorney-prosecutors work with Weed, Graff, Stra, and Associates. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item would be citizen comment. If any member of the audience wished to address the council on something that's not on today's agenda, we'd ask you to come up. Come on up, gentlemen. We give you three minutes or so. Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's John Pringle, head coach of Velocity Swimming, and it's 2377 Silo Drive, East Wenatchee, actually. I'm here today on behalf of Velocity Swimming. I just want to thank you for your continued support of the city pool outdoors. We started practice this week, and it's great. The city staff has been very welcoming and has done a great job of getting that pool ready to go. I want to encourage you to keep the support going for that facility. I know it's aging and has some work to be done, but the swim lessons that it provides as an anti-drowning measure in our community are immeasurable. We have some drownings in our community over the past years, and we'd just like to see the swim lessons continue. Also, we'd like to invite you next weekend out. If you haven't ever seen the Apple Capital Swim Meet, it's been a part of our valley for over 50 years. We have over 900 athletes and support people, volunteers. It helps fill our restaurants and our hotels over the weekend, and it's the number-three largest sports event in Wenatchee. So we'd like to invite everybody out and just appreciate everybody's efforts on behalf of that facility.
So, John, what happens when it doesn't hold water one of these years? Which is that we ask David every year, is it holding water? Is it gonna make it? You know, and we pull magic out, but one of these years, that's not gonna happen.
Right. Well, I hope that we can find the support in the community and means to find some funding to get some things done, and perhaps that means a total redo. I would encourage, if a redo is something that eventually can happen, that outdoor configuration with the competitive environment is included in that. But I just look at Moses Lake, our neighbor to the east a little bit, and what they have going with water park and a competitive environment, and I know that we could figure out a way to get that done in the future.
Great.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. All right, thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other members of the... Oh, you're gonna come up now? I actually sort of wrote you down by presentations, but you can do it now.
Well, I was told to be a public person.
We didn't have her on a presentation.
All right.
My name is Darcy Christopherson, and my address is 2 South Shalane Avenue. And I'm with the Apple Blossom Festival. I'm here to give my report on Apple Blossom, and it was our 100th festival, for those of you that don't know that or did not know that. And it was awesome. First off, we want to thank the city for remodeling our office. It was... All I wanted was paint and carpet. I want to make record of that. But it turned into a lot more, but it turned out beautiful, and it was so great to have so many people come home and see that building that remembered it as a library or the museum. So it was, it was great, and we just have to...
It really does look fantastic.
It really does.
Aaron, where's Aaron at? Is he even here?
He's not here. I wish he was.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they, it just...
The crew did a great job.
The crew did a great job, and we're going to work on a new sign, whether it'll be the one in front or the one in the flower bed. It'll be one way or the other, so we won't have two signs, and we won't have a sign that everybody puts banners on. And then we're going to put Carnegie Building on the building. If you look at old pictures, it used to have museum or library on it, so we thought it would be neat to put Carnegie Building on the actual building. So we're gonna work with the Carnegie people to see if it's something that they might be interested in paying for. So we won't have to. But the festival did end up buying the blinds and buying a few, the reception desk, and then, of course, any signage that we do the festival will, of course, take care of. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's wonderful to go to work in that beautiful building, so, thanks. The grand marshals that came from New Zealand, they were the great-grandchildren of the founder, Susan Wagner, and they absolutely loved every minute of it. They were here for five days. Actually, they extended their stay for an additional two days, and they felt like celebrities. They said they walked, they walked everywhere. They didn't drive anywhere, and they were waving at people, and people knew who they were. So it was awesome. And we do want New Zealand, a city in New Zealand, at least, to be one of our sister cities. So we need to work on that, I think. And I'd be happy to be the one to go down and learn more about that. We had 165 past royalty members. We had every year from 1960 to 2018 represented in the grand parade, and we have 95 convertibles. So that's quite an endeavor to take on, and we did it, and every convertible showed up, every past royalty member showed up. So it was great to see everybody in the parade. And it was my first year in 25 years to actually ride in the parade, and I thought it was huge. I don't know what you thought riding in it, if you felt there was more people because of the 100...
There were more people, and I thought they were a little more appreciative and a little more friendly and...
They were definitely engaged.
Yeah.
It was, it was nice to see.
I did learn that we do need more announcing throughout the route. You know, 25 years ago, when I went down the route, there wasn't a lot of people on Fifth to Seventh, and I couldn't believe how many people were still, were down there on Fifth and Seventh. So we're gonna work on getting some announcing in front of the Wenatchee Center and maybe do some at Cherry Creek Radio. So then that way, there's more announcing going on. Our documentary was a huge, huge success. We have sold about 300 DVDs, and then we're in the process of getting them, getting it online, and where you can buy it on iTunes or whatever type thing that you would buy it from. And then we actually had it at Liberty Cinema during the festival, and they had a good turnout for that. And the only negative, of course, was the weather the first weekend. It wasn't great. We were up in everything as far as the beer garden and food, but we could've probably done better if it wasn't so windy and cold during that first weekend, but then we made up for it Saturday. And then, of course, the protesters, which we, we know we can't do anything about that, but that was kind of a downer for us, definitely, the big weekend. A lot of our food vendors that were new, that was something that they weren't used to, and...
Yeah, so for the council that weren't there, there's the abortion issue and the people walking through with pictures of dead fetuses and all that.
Yeah.
First Amendment, we have a hard time arresting them. Well, Steve Smith wants to, but...
We all do.
So it's just, it's a very awkward sort of situation. The vendors don't like it, the people in the park don't like it, and it's...
It just happens at other events around the state.
It does. It, it, for the vendors that do this all year long, this was nothing new to them. But for the two new ones that don't do this all year long, it was very, and one of them was right next to one of the protesters the whole weekend. But our police department did a great job, and we have some ideas to maybe have more activity going on in those certain corners, because once we have something there, apparently they can't stand in that spot. So we've talked a little bit about changing some things up and having maybe some music on the corner that's our music and...
And perhaps, just as we did with dogs and whatnot, that we take a look at, I get the First Amendment stuff, but people carrying signs themselves can pose a safety hazard to the folks, and so that might be, you know, not content. It's tough.
It is. I mean, the dog ordinance one is hard, too, you know, with people that say that their dog is, what's the word I'm thinking of?
Support.
A support dog, and it's like, okay, and you just don't want to argue anymore. And that's pretty much how this is, too. But our staff did a good job in the majority of, I mean, how many emails did I send to you? Maybe three? So it wasn't like there was a lot. We just learned to ignore, and it kind of worked. So, anyway, that was it. I mean, it was awesome, and now we're on to Festival 2000, or Festival 101 is what we're calling it. Blooming Fun in 101.
Oh, got it.
So it'll be, isn't that nice? You know, we're excited.
I don't think the chief's not here, but I think crime was sort of at an average, evenness, a little bit down, so...
And again, they were awesome to work with, for the whole protest. They went to all of our parade meetings and told our parade marshals what to do, so it was safe because of the way they explained everything to us, which was very helpful, because usually I'd go down there and throw a little fit, and it was great that they got ahold of me before that.
Before you threw a fit?
Yeah, before I threw a fit.
All right, any questions for Darcy about Apple Blossom, or? I still think it's what we did with the chairs, the ordinance, to not allow the chairs out has worked out really well.
Yeah.
Are they starting to creep in?
No.
People are doing it.
People are doing it.
Our public works folks, if they see something out there before that, they'll get rid of it, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
My wife gets it off her chest once a year, and then we're good.
She wants her chairs out.
She wants her chair out, yeah. Okay. Any questions at all?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, see you next year.
All right, thank you. And presentations, we've got our Memorial Day proclamation. Councilmember Kulas.
Thank you. Whereas since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has on occasion been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution, and whereas at times it became necessary to resort to armed conflict to protect these concepts, which give each citizen of the United States certain inalienable rights, and whereas citizens of our great country have given of their lives in the protection of these inalienable rights, and whereas each year we set aside one day to which we can revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 27th, 2019, as Memorial Day in the City of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honoring their memory. And witness whereof I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 23rd day of May, 2019. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Councilmember Kulas. And there will be, I think, nine o'clock in the morning at the East Wenatchee Cemetery, 10 o'clock in the morning at the Black Bridge, the dropping of a wreath. I'll be giving some remarks at 11 o'clock at our cemetery, and then noon at Pibus, I think they're doing a little event. So you guys are out and about, and I will be to the Black Bridge and ours and the Pibus one as well, so... All right, so, action items. We have a number of public hearing items regarding some of our code updates. These are ones that we talked about, was it a year ago, six, seven, eight months ago, and directed staff to get these into final working order. I think they've took some while on Steve Smith's desk to get to the final spot, so we've got a number of them. These are all public hearing items. Holy cow. H-I... Yeah, so, for public hearing items, we'll hear from staff, we'll ask questions of staff, we'll turn over to members of the public, and then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may have. So Cliff, you doing all of these? Cliff and Jessica?
This is after, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. First one on our agenda is update to Chapter 1614. This amendment would allow us on nuisance abatements to get the first $2,000 of cleanup costs on current year's taxes. We'll have to do an agreement with the county treasurer to do this. I think Steve's working on that currently, Steve or Danielle. And what, what it'll do, it won't solve all our problems with collecting from these abatements, but it will help. At least get back, every year we'll get back a portion of it.
Can you give me an idea what a nuisance would be, or something you're working on now, where you go, oh, if I had...
Garbage and debris. You know, there was ones where we clean up, you know, vegetation, things like that. We're gonna have a couple of these, too, down and down.
Yeah.
That are essentially the same thing, because the state law that allows this allows it in several instances.
Got it.
So if our cleanup costs were $2,500, at least the first $2,000 would, we wouldn't be secondary, we would be, have equitable rights as the other...
Yep.
Correct.
So is this one, is that the only one this one does?
This is the only one this one does, is for instances.
You guys have any questions for Cliff? I turn over to any member of the audience who wished to address the council on ordinance 2019-19 regarding nuisance ordinance. Seeing no takers. Council, I'll turn it over to you for any action you may have.
Your honor, I make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-19, amending Chapter 16.14 of the Wenatchee City Code by the addition of an administrative nuisance abatement process and providing an effective date therefore.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2019-19, amending Chapter 16.14 of Wenatchee City Code by the addition of an administrative nuisance abatement process and providing an effective date therefore. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cliff. Next one?
Next item on the agenda, ordinance 2019-20, adopting the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, which is here. It's a part of the family of codes by the International Code Council. We have some amendments in the ordinance to get it where it's our local stuff, so it replaces Chapter 207, which is our housing code, which hasn't been updated in many years.
Can you give me just sort of one thing where you changed from what the international code would say for something that you thought should be different for our city code?
One is grass. Talks about height of grass.
Okay.
We have things, requirements for garbage cans, location on the curb, back away from the sidewalk. We have some problems with people leaving their garbage cans out on the street.
Yeah, I noticed that a few times when I go walking.
Moving back. We have some new definitions for junk vehicles, things like that.
Okay. All right, any...
And as far as like grass height, this is just to kind of keep somebody from letting their yard grow wild. I mean, obviously, we don't want to be out there policing everybody to a half inch of grass or something like that.
Yeah, currently, our code says 12 inches, and then it's for developed lots and undeveloped lots. Now we're gonna have a code that has undeveloped lots and developed lots, so...
And developed lots, the height is like...
It's gonna be six inches.
Okay.
Undeveloped lots will be 12. It's gonna stay as current.
And what was it previously?
12.
12 and 12.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
So this one has the junk vehicles, right?
Yes.
So how do you determine some of those rulings, I guess? Says something about, last one, number five, has an approximate fair market value equal only to the approximate value of the scrap on, in it. Who's gonna determine that?
Scrap, Wenatchee Valley salvage and recycling. Everybody's gonna tell you.
They drive out there and say, yeah, it's worth about 50 bucks?
Yeah, I mean, that's really essentially about what it is. Steel is way down right now.
Just seems weird.
Scrap value is really bad.
It seems like that would be a hard thing for somebody to determine or drive around. How come...
So you only have to meet three of those.
Three of those. Yeah, so why, if there's no tabs on, how come you can't just say one? How come you can't say if you're not tabbing, no tabs, uh...
This is taking, most of these, these are taken out of the RCWs, is what it is.
And we have to...
Yeah, we don't want to make it, we can't really make it worse or harder.
It still doesn't resolve some things that I, that I personally would want resolved, but I know we have to, this is, we gotta adopt it this way. Okay, I just wanted to mention that.
Do you have a few in that price range? Is that what you're thinking? Where you get rid of them?
Well, how do you determine, right?
Yeah.
And I know you don't have to do three, but I think if you got, you got a boat...
Yeah.
And you don't have it, somebody's gonna go give you a ticket. But if you have a car sitting on your property or on the street, I guess, uh...
It's not bad. If it's unlicensed...
Yeah.
If it's older than three years, and it's apparently inoperable, there's the three.
There's the three.
Yep. So you gotta go, you want to go in, and the code enforcement guy's, he's gonna go out there, start it up, I'm gonna pull up, you start it, drive it down the street, drive it back, yeah. If they can't start it, it's, that meets the criteria.
All right, any questions for Cliff?
And is that just if it's visible from the street or something? Because, I mean, let's, let's think about a guy restoring your car or something like that, you know? As long as he's got it in his garage where nobody can see it, then it's fine?
That's absolutely correct.
It's just that if it's sitting out in his front yard or in his driveway?
Yeah.
In his driveway is not okay?
Nope, needs to be in his garage. It's, it's visible.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Cliff? All right, any member of the audience wished to address the council on ordinance 2019-20, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code with amendments? Seeing no, no members of the public, I'll turn over to council for any action they'd be willing to take.
Would include a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-20, adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with amendments thereto, regulating and governing the conditions of maintenance of all property, buildings and structures, by providing the standard for supply utilities and facilities and other physical things, and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, and the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Wenatchee, repealing Chapter 2.07 of the Wenatchee City Code, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Kulas, to adopt ordinance 2019-20, adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with amendments thereto, regulating lots of stuff, and repealing Chapter 2.07 of the Wenatchee City Code, providing for severability and an effective date. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
All right. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2019-21.
So this is an ordinance that would create Chapter 2.12 of the Wenatchee City Code. It would be entitled Registration of Defaulted Mortgage and Vacant Property. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish process to address the deterioration in crime and decline in value of City of Wenatchee neighborhoods caused by defaulted mortgages and vacant properties. This will basically set up a registration program, and we intend, if this is passed tonight, would be to bring forward at probably the next council meeting, it would be a contract with ProChampions, and that they're gonna actually do the legwork on enforcing this ordinance for us. And I, so I emailed him earlier this week, and he said, currently, there are 12 properties in foreclosure in the city of Wenatchee, and another 21 have a 40% chance of being in foreclosure.
And this has nothing to do with ones that are currently vacant that have been foreclosed on years ago?
No.
Okay. Because it still seems like we have...
If it is owned by a bank...
Right.
And it, then they would register those.
Okay.
Because it's vacant.
Okay. And these guys can figure out which ones those are as well?
They know exactly how many of those are.
And are some of these still from the old housing crisis that haven't worked their way through in the last seven or eight or nine years?
Absolutely. Just one down Stella from our Public Works building was vacant when we moved in, and somebody just moved in...
Wow.
About three months ago.
Is this pretty much a, for this program, a model code?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's used by many cities throughout the United States.
Yeah, it kind of read that way.
The gentleman that owns this company worked for the banks doing foreclosures.
Yeah.
There's, there's probably four or five companies that do this for a living.
Push the bank for sales, for maintenance, and also come to this available for the public and nonprofit purchase.
That's our whole goal with registration, is they'll decide they want to get these on the market, so they don't have to pay us registration every six months.
Well, good. We need to get them on the market and quit having them be empty, so...
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
All right, any questions for Cliff?
Yeah, how much is the fee gonna be?
$300 every six months, and ProChamps will take 100 of that. So they will take, they will collect the fees and figure out who needs to submit and register, and then they will mail us a check. Okay.
That's good. All right, any other questions for Cliff? All right, anybody from the audience wished to address the council on ordinance number 2019-21? Seeing no takers. I'll turn this over to the council for their action.
I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-21, creating Chapter 2.12 of the Wenatchee City Code to be entitled Registration for Defaulted Mortgage and Vacant Property, providing for purpose, intent, and applicability of the ordinance, requiring the registration and maintenance of certain real property by mortgages and vacant property owners, providing for penalties and enforcement, as well as the regulation, limitation, and reduction of registrable, registratable real property within the city of Wenatchee, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt ordinance 2019-21, creating Chapter 2.12 of the Wenatchee City Code to be entitled Registration for Defaulted Mortgages and Vacant Property, providing for purpose, intent, and applicability of the ordinance, requiring the registration and maintenance of certain real property by mortgages and vacant property owners, providing for penalties and enforcement, as well as the regulation, limitation, and reduction of registrable real property within the city of Wenatchee, providing for severability and an effective date. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cliff, ordinance 2019-22.
Creates Chapter 1615 of Wenatchee City Code, which would be entitled Regulation and Abatement of Unsafe and Unsanitary Structures or Premises. And the purpose of this ordinance is to establish an administrative abatement process for unsafe and unsanitary structures and premises. And it's, the intent of this chapter is to clarify and strengthen the procedures for abating such nuisances, particularly unsafe or unfit dwellings, buildings, structures, or premises, and is modeled after the provisions of RCW 35A21405. And part of our goal on this is to shorten the timeline from the time we don't get compliance with a violation to the time we can abate the violation. And so it'll set up a hearing. Glenn will be the administrator of that hearing process, and we're hoping that it will lessen our time to abate a nuisance by about four months.
Yeah.
That's our goal. The good thing is, this also gives us the ability to file a lien for up to the first 2,000 of that and get it back with current year's taxes, too, which would help us, like and get it back with current year's taxes too, which would help us, like in the case of 1380 South Wenatchee. The fire went through the house. We had about $8,000 in cleanup costs on that. At least we can get some of it back.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get it back when the bank sells it.
All right, council members, any questions for Cliff? Hearing none. Any member of the audience wish to address the city council on ordinance 2019-22? Seeing no takers, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-21, creating chapter 16.15 of the Wenatchee City Code to be entitled Regulation and Abatement of Unsafe and Unsanitary Structures or Premises, providing for purpose, intent and applicability of the ordinance, providing for the administrative abatement of unsafe and unsanitary buildings or premises, providing for enforcement, assessment of costs and penalties, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Poyer, second by councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2019-21, creating chapter 16.15 of the Wenatchee City Code to be entitled Regulation and Abatement of Unsafe and Unsanitary Structures or Premises, providing for purpose, intent and applicability of the ordinance, providing for the administrative abatement of unsafe, unsanitary buildings or premises, providing for enforcement, assessment of costs and penalties, providing for severability and an effective date.
Just to clarify, it's number 22.
I knew that.
I don't know.
Perfect. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2019-23, Cliff.
This ordinance contains three small amendments to chapter 6A14 nuisances. It adds the plant commonly known as puncture vine or goat head to the definition of a public nuisance, therefore giving our code enforcement staff the ability to abate puncture vine. Adds a couple of words to section two, and then it corrects a clerical error, replacing the word "public" with "chronic," because that section is talking about chronic nuisances. And that's all that ordinance contains.
So the idea on puncture vine, when we had our goat head warriors out, technically they couldn't go onto somebody else's property and spray or abate, and now they would have the ability to, in certain instances, go on and perhaps do some abatement?
It would require the property owner to abate it.
And if they didn't?
Then we could do it.
Okay.
You would file an action...
They would go through, you would go through code enforcement board. They're going to make a ruling, giving them a certain amount of time to...
As we would do with any other...
Correct the violation. If they didn't, they're going to get fined $100 a day for thirty days.
So currently, our code doesn't have puncture vine as being one of the ones we could do that for?
It needs to be a knowing violation. You know, we've probably all had goat heads that show up, you know, and you're like, oh, where'd that come from? So you get a notice, then if you don't comply, don't fix it, then you get cited.
And that's our code enforcement process, is you go first. That's our first part of code enforcement, is you go and talk to the people before we start an action. Give them the ability to correct the violation first.
Okay, any questions for Cliff? If not, any member of the audience wish to address the city council on ordinance 2019-23? Seeing no takers, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-23, amending Wenatchee City Code, chapter 6A.14, relating to nuisances.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Huffaker, second by councilmember Kulas, to adopt ordinance 2019-23, amending Wenatchee City Code, chapter 6A.14, related to nuisances.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2019-24, regarding fireworks, Cliff.
So this ordinance amends several sections of chapter 5.120, clarifying what is required to apply for a permit, competency of the people handing and discharging fireworks license requirements, and the bonding or certificate of insurance requirements for discharging of fireworks. This ordinance also removes the requirement that all applications be considered for approval or denial by city council. Currently, the ordinance states that city council has all the approval or denial rights for this.
And this is essentially for the non-consumer displays, right?
Yep. Typically, the only thing that's allowed right now is we do Fourth of July, we do graduation, we do Apple Socks games, and we do Town Toyota Center, sometimes the Performing Arts Center. But those are typically... We've had no more, we haven't had no permit applications for anything other than those for the last three years.
And our code prior to this said that the council had ultimate authority?
Yes, it required, yes, all the decision-making for these events, permitting of these events come through the city council.
Okay, so now it's just staff-driven, fill out the thing, you make sure that the guy's licensed and has his insurance and...
Up until, what, two years ago, I think when I sent this to Steve, staff didn't even know that that was a requirement.
Okay.
I don't recall ever having that done, nor do I ever to.
They just get their, yeah, staff just handled it. Okay, any questions for Cliff? Any member of the audience wish to address the council on ordinance 2019-24? Seeing no takers, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-24, amending chapter 5.120 relating to fireworks.
Got a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Poyer, second by councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2019-24, amending chapter 5.120 relating to fireworks.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cliff, you're going to define administrator, huh?
This was a tough one. Yeah, this ordinance, it just amends it by moving, removing the word "economic" from the definition of administrator. Just clarifies that the director of community development is the administrator of chapter 16.
Great. Any questions for Cliff? Any member of the audience wish to address the council on this ordinance, 2019-25? Seeing no takers, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Your honor, I make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-25, amending certain provisions of ordinance number 2014-02, section I, relating to the definition of administrator.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Kulas, second by councilmember Poyer, to adopt ordinance 2019-25, amending certain provisions of ordinance 2014-02, section I, relating to the definition of administrator.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2019-26, Cliff.
So this section, it is amending chapter 1313. It's just some language that we don't have a process for a notice of violation and order. So we have a notice of code violation, we have a notice and order, and so this was just to clean this up so staff could clearly understand how to use this code section. And so we actually, in discussion with Danielle, we added code enforcement board decision or voluntary correction agreement to these two, so we knew when we could utilize this section of this code.
So administrative cleanup?
Yep.
Council, any questions for Cliff? Hearing none. Any members of the audience wish to address the council regarding ordinance 2019-26? Seeing no takers, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2019-26, amending certain provisions of ordinance number 2010-34, section I, relating to the revocation, suspension or modification of a permit subdivision or other land use approval. Second.
Motion by councilmember Markhart, second by councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2019-26, amending certain provisions of ordinance 2010-34, section I, relating to the revocation, suspension or modification of a permit subdivision or other land use approval.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for you?
Thank you very much, yes.
Pretty quiet night at the office. Jessica.
Finally.
Going to amend our stormwater code.
Yes, good evening, Jessica Schab, environmental manager for Public Works, and back again with the land surface modification code proposal, and then some supporting code changes. As you recall, we presented to the planning commission and a work session to city council last month, and based on the recommendations from the planning commission, thank you, Steve, for addressing all of our complications here of coming forward with two separate ordinances tonight with two different options for the land surface modification, the one that staff has recommended, and then also one with the planning commission recommendation. And then we also have some other code changes that go along with that. And to keep things a little more simple tonight, we are not bringing forth the fee code changes. We'll be bringing those back in a few weeks, so pending decision tonight, determine whether or not where we're going forward with those fees, because the planning commission recommendation would have a different fee structure than if we went with the staff recommendation. So we left that off the table tonight. There's also going to be another code amendment coming along with the fee code that would repeal Appendix J, which is the current grading permit code that's in the building code now. The main difference with this land surface modification is that it provides more exemptions, it puts the administration of the land surface modification code into Public Works, and also aligns it with our stormwater code. So tonight, you have the staff recommended version as the first code option. The key with this is that the lower threshold is that projects moving less than 50 cubic yards of material, there'd be no permit required. The next kind of threshold level would be 50 to 200 cubic yards, would be what we would hope to be our simple version of the land surface modification permit, and then anything over 200 cubic yards may require a more substantial engineered permit, application or submittals. The other, the major difference between the two is just the thresholds. The planning commission had recommended that the minimum threshold be 200 cubic yards, so anything less than 200 would not require a permit. The next bracket would be 201 to 500 cubic yards, would require a simplified version of the permit, and then anything over 500 cubic yards would require the more detailed submittals and review by the city. So those are the, kind of the heart of the two differences between the two land surface modification code options that you have before you tonight. The third code, there's only one version of this, it's very simple changes. Primarily, we are moving the code that used to be under development regulations and under kind of the, apparently, administration of public or the community development, but actually Public Works administers the stormwater regulations. There was also a 2016 Supreme Court ruling that changed how we look at these regulations. When they were first adopted back in 2011, they were viewed as development regulations, subject to vesting statutes. But now they are regulations, and the Washington State Department of Ecology establishes the vesting timelines for these. So it's more regulatory, and that was the determination from the Supreme Court. So we are moving that code out of the development regulations and into the utility regulations. And then also, we have added in a project that we're working on to have some pre-approved plans and policies for our new development for stormwater. So that's the only change to the actual language in the code.
So staff's recommendation is the motion that's here, is there anything else we have to change to that? Because I know we talked about it at a work session, and we sort of chose to adapt staff's recommendations, not the planning commission's recommendations, so I want to make sure that we're consistent.
Yes.
Yeah, we can clarify that.
There's a few versions of '09.
Correct.
One is staff, and one's planning commission, so you have to decide.
So we want to make clear that which one we're adopting, okay.
So I have a question related to the land service modification permit and current Appendix J. Is it fair to characterize this, that Appendix J is, we are essentially repealing from the code, to be replaced by the land service modification code? And the land service modification code is more than just stormwater, meeting our stormwater obligations. It's also assuming the grading and excavation portions essentially now governed by Appendix J.
That is exactly correct. Very well stated.
Thank you. I win.
So Jessica, to make sure I understand what Mark just said. So you push around five dump trucks worth of dirt on your property, and anything over five dump trucks, you're going to have to get some type of simple permit?
Yes.
And a swimming pool, if you dug a swimming pool, that's more than five dump trucks?
So the key would be is you got to get a permit to build a swimming pool. And so if you came in to get your swimming pool permit, we would not require you to get a land surface modification permit.
So, give me, I need an idea of 200 yards or 20 dump trucks, right?
Yes.
So I need an idea... I know why we're looking at doing this, because some people are just dumping a whole bunch of stuff here and there, and they're doing environmental issues, and water's draining, they don't care, whatever. But I'm trying to, how hard is it to get a simple permit? What am I filling, what am I, if I'm a landowner, what am I filling out to get this simple permit? How simple is this permit? I don't care about the cost necessarily, but how simple is this? And are you guys going to say no? I mean, you're going to be able to, you have to be able to say no, right?
At some point. I think, though, this is a complimentary permit to processes that are already happening. So, and the idea is not that you have an extra permit to get, but that if you'd like to start your project early, I think this is probably most applicable. We tried to eliminate all the smaller residential projects, and we don't want to have to issue an LSM permit for a pool. We would hope people would just come in and get your permit to build your swimming pool, and we would talk with them at that time about erosion, sediment control, managing their dirt. And so really, this is for those projects that are at a scale where they're still working on plans, but the contractor wants to get out there and start clearing and grading, and maybe doing some of their utility installation work. And this is actually a request that we've gotten from project folks that will come in and say, hey, can we get started? I know we're still in the plan review phase, but we have our utilities done. We're ready to go. And so this allows us this opportunity to give them this permit, to get them started. It also helps with things where folks want to go out and clear land, but they don't have a plan for what they're doing yet. So those are where sometimes people get ahead of themselves, and they start clearing and grading, and then nothing happens for a long period of time, and then we have a lot of erosion and dust issues that result, that cause problems for neighbors. So those are kind of the two main cases we're trying to identify. And so our goal is really that for most things, if you come in and get a permit for something else, any kind of building permit, then you're not going to need the land surface modification permit. It's not additive, it's just a way to get started on your project early. Or if you don't have a plan for where you're going, it helps us to make sure that the applicant is managing their site properly for whatever period of time it takes to get to that plan of what they're doing.
So this will help eliminate the developers that are, that have a lot, that they're just dumping stuff on it. Now we're going to be able to say, no, you're not going to just keep dumping dirt on here. They're moving it over to this one and moving it over here.
They'll need, they'll need to, yeah, be responsible about that, yeah.
And we have a few like that that are out pushing dirt on their own property, right? Well, I own this nine acres, and I'm going to be pushing dirt to make six slots, and I can do whatever, I can play on my lot with my toys anytime I want, and you can't make me do something. Yet, they're, that's causing wind-blown dust and mud in our stormwater system, and so we have to be able to work with these people and be able to give them a permit, regulate them. For all those that are doing it the right way, this is really not a big deal. It's those that don't want to play.
It's unusual, I believe, people that build houses think it's awkward that this hasn't happened before in other cities. I believe they're all required.
Yes.
This is...
Grading permits, land surface modification permits are very common in other parts of the state. And when we developed this code, we looked at the grading permit for Kiddatass County, Spokane County. You know, so it's in eastern Washington, it's just less common. It's more common in areas where there's a lot more development occurring, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
So I'm trying to remember why staff wanted to reduce it from 200 to 50. I'm not remembering that for some reason.
Yeah, so the 50 cubic yards, we looked at five dump trucks, which, you know, for the average homeowner, that's probably quite a bit of dirt to be moving, especially if you don't have a plan of what's going to be happening with that amount of dirt, whether it's on or off the property. And it, we looked at some other codes of other thresholds, and that's where the 50 cubic yards came from. So I think from the planning commission's perspective, they were looking at, if you get up to 500 cubic yards, then you trigger SEPA. And so they were thinking that that made, they wanted that as a threshold, and had thought that the 50 maybe was too low. So I'm not sure that the 200 was just four times more than what we were proposing, but then the 500 was just based on SEPA, so... Rob, do you have to add?
I'd like to add, just, so the, if somebody's moving over 50 yards, between 50 and 200, we want to keep that barrier really low. So they come in, they tell us what they're doing, we give a simple, polite plan, and they're on their way. But if they're going to move 60 yards and they're on a 30% slope, we want to say, hmm, let's timeout. Let's think about this, what's going to happen when it rains and so on. We're really wanting to use it as more of a meet and greet with the person, have that open communication about, you know, manage your site, manage your dirt, and then thanks for coming in. But there are, you know, there are a few sites that, and we get building on more up in the western foot, you know, with the streets, oh, we want to pause for a second and make sure that they're not causing problems to our storm system. So I think that 99% of the applications, they'll be in, they'll be out, be very, very tame runs. And there'll be a couple that will say, well, let's do a little bit more, more work on it.
Thank you. All right, so any other questions for Jessica? If not, I turn it over to any member of the audience who wish to address the council on the land surface modification code update. Seeing no takers, I will turn this over to the council for their action. I guess specific to making sure that we're using the correct one. Councilmember Kulas?
Your honor, I make a motion for the council to adopt ordinances number 2019-09, that being as recommended by staff. being as recommended by staff that sets the threshold at 50 cubic yards, and Ordinance 2019-12 regarding land surface modification permitting and construction and post-construction stormwater management.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Kulaus, second by councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Ordinance 2019-09, the one specifically being staff recommendation of the 50 cubic yards movement, and 2019-12 regarding land surface modification permitting, the construction and post-construction stormwater management. Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, action items. Anyone need a break? Should we just keep going?
Let's just finish.
Okay. I'm good. All right, water redundancy. I know John McCarty's got some family in town, so Rob is sitting in for John.
I can sit down. Yes, thank you. Tonight, we're here just to ask for council's approval to have the mayor sign Amendment Number Five with RH2 Engineering. This is for our continued research of water out in the Malaga area, and we've been under the, under process since about 2017. The contract or the amendment is for 170,000. That, we had budget authority already in the 2019 budget for regional water, so this is not an additional ask, it's just authorizing the mayor to sign this contract with RH2 to continue for this water research. So, any questions?
This is our third time?
Yes. Yeah, this is our third try at trying to get water. So, we went really deep the first time, we hit nothing, and so, at the spot, we were sure we were going to hit. The second time, we decided to go not quite as deep in a few locations, and those were all dry. So, I think they've decided this is our last shot at it before they come up with another plan, so.
We're going to be drilling, we're currently in negotiations to drill on some property owned by Goodfellow, that they think has a good chance for, for water, it shows good signs of what they're looking for. And then, further down south near our drying beds, there's a spot down there that we're going to try to drill at.
We're going to ask this in all seriousness. Are, are we, are they, is the regional at all using the services of a water witcher?
Well, they have a, what's the name of it? It's a G, there's a name for a guy that's really good at.
A geo?
Hydrogeologist, I believe.
Yeah, but does he hold a stick?
Yeah.
Welding rods.
We talked to finance, we talked to finance, where we have Lyle go down and do a dance, the water dance.
I'm, I'm serious.
I, yeah, and I've, I've seen that effective, too, but, yeah.
All over eastern Washington.
Yeah.
Same.
You know, in Waterville, they won't drill well unless the witcher says it's okay or whatever.
Probably a lot less than 170,000.
Uh, it might be. Well, no, I, I, like I said, I'm serious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not voodoo.
Right, I've, I've seen it, too. I don't know whether they're using water witching, that wasn't disclosed in the contract.
Might just confirm it.
Yeah.
This is the spot.
You need names, we can probably throw a few.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign Supplement Number Five with RH2 for continued exploratory well drilling and testing, Project Number 1302, in the amount of 171,211 dollars.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Poyer, second by councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to sign Supplement Five with RH2 Engineering for continued exploratory well drilling and testing, Project 1302, in the amount of 171,211 dollars. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. David, Trust for Public Lands update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Good evening. Dave Erickson, Parks Director for the City of Wenatchee. This evening, we're seeking approval of an amendment to the project agreement with the Trust for Public Lands for the Kiwanis Met Hall Park project. You have the agreement in front of you. A couple of the changes, the primary changes. First one is it takes TPL out of the construction portion of the project, with the exception of the artwork, and turns that construction management over to us. The other one is with all the different changes in financing of this project, it changes that to match kind of the current situation that we have. And then, it also specifies a little bit more on the donor recognition and portion of the project. This has been reviewed by the City Attorney Association of Washington Cities, and then also debated at the last Arts Rec and Park Commission meeting. To give you an update on the, on the project itself, we had pre-construction meetings this week. The contractor should be mobilizing into the park next Tuesday, ordered the restrooms today, and we're continuing to kind of work through a litany of issues with the project.
Any questions for David?
So, why, why are we changing the leadership of the project?
We would like the project to be completed.
So, as I read, this essentially flip-flops the responsibilities, including the funding of the responsibility.
Yep, from the first agreement.
And so, I guess, I guess we all learned a lesson.
Yeah, I, I.
Who we're going to partner with, and when we do.
Yeah.
It's going to be, just like every doggone thing, there are going to be more legal documents.
Yeah, I think, you know, from our perspective, obviously, just the lessons we've learned, we trust David and his staff completely, and the Trust for Public Lands, just, we're doing things differently, we're quite as organized as Dave and our staff is. And so, as much as Dave would like to not have to build a park, if we're going to get it done in a way that is correct, and just with all the different laws and rules and stuff, it, we didn't have a choice, but we were going to end up taking this part of it on. So, a, a bit of a byproduct, and I think, you know, again, our friends at Eastern Anchee who are going through the same process, they, they need to look very closely at how that's all going, yeah.
I think the other part of it was the state grants.
The gift that keeps giving.
Yeah.
We, we also have the state grants that we signed on the bottom line for, so, we have a great reputation with that program, and we want to ensure that.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing, is a lot of RCO money in this, and they trust us to make sure that it gets spent according to the law, and so.
We're, we're finding a number of items. We've already, the project hasn't started yet, and we've had a mountain of requests for information, RFIs, from the contractor saying, why, why does this stormpipe, the park is terraced? Why does it daylight in the terraces? That's not quite right. Can you provide us with a, a catch base in detail? And we're not getting that information from the trust. So, we're working through a, a number of issues on this.
So, how much extra staff time are we looking to take over the project?
We, we have programmed it in. We're going to see, we think, we had budgeted the Chase Park project this year. Felton's going to probably end up having to go to the sideline, because we are spending a lot of time on this project.
Yeah, and so, obviously, we've hired Charlotte, removed her from our regular engineering crew into sort of Parks construction mode. So, Charlotte is the one you've seen here before. We did that in anticipation of this project, and then, Hale Park, and Chase, and Lincoln, and Kenzie's Landing, and Saddle Rock. I mean, it seems like there's lots of construction stuff, so we sort of have the right staffs in the right spot. It does, is going to push one project back, but it's just really going to become Charlotte's, and Dave's sort of maybe here for a little bit, so.
So, not only did we throw in a bunch of extra money, now we put off one of, of the project.
We think we can get the cemetery out to bid. We're pretty close to, on that one. That's to do the road extension project. Saddle Rock is cruising along great, we've got super engineers on that. We think, once we get into the actual construction of Met Hall with the contractor, contractor's been wonderful so far to work with, has really worked with us to try to keep costs where they're supposed to, where they're supposed to be with these little surprises that we're finding along the way, so.
They even suggested some changes that would lessen the cost, or.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't, I, I think, yeah, the same level of disappointment we had a month ago when we did this is still here. At this point, it's just trying to figure out how best to complete a contract, and it's best to have our staff doing it, and get the Trust for Public Lands out of the middle of building something.
And I guess, I'm still curious, is TPL and/or the Kiwanis, are they still continuing with fundraising, or are they walk, are they walking away completely?
Kiwanis hasn't done much since TPL's come on board. I think they, and I could be wrong on the number, but it could be $2,000 to $5,000, I think they dedicated toward the project. I don't know that TPL is doing any additional fundraising after the last time we met with them.
Why would they?
All right, so I would entertain a motion if we had one.
I'd like to make a motion for the city council to approve the project agreement with the Trust for Public Lands for the Kiwanis Met Hall Park project, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Markhart, second by councilmember Kulaus, to approve the project agreement with the Trust for Public Lands for the Kiwanis Met Hall Park project, and authorize the mayor to sign. Any further discussion?
Just to comment, that we really need to be more careful in the future, because this has been an expensive lesson.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Jacob, concrete flatwork.
Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager, here tonight to talk about a on-call concrete flatwork contract. So, the purpose of this contract is to provide more timely restoration of sidewalks and driveways after our city maintenance crews perform their, their various activities. So, for instance, if the water crew were to go in and need to make some changes to a, a meter, and had to demo the sidewalk around that, they, or our street crews on the hook at this point to perform that restoration. Based on the workload that they've got, sometimes that lingers a little bit longer than we'd like for the, for the public. So, this is to supplement our crews' ability to restore those, like I said, in a, in a timely fashion. So, our crews went through and estimated some quantities to provide a common bidding basis for contractors. As I mentioned, the contract is structured as an on-call contract, so task assignments will be issued when the work is deemed necessary. The project was put out on April 18th, and we received two bids. Black Forest Finishes was the lowest responsible bidder. We've currently got budget authorization up to 275,000. Their estimate, or their bid came in at 100, roughly 137,000. And our recommendation at this point would be to award to Black Forest Finishes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
So, I'm curious on this, how's this going to work? So, they're on call, but, so you're just going to, is it based on how many yards is poured, or is it based on per project, if it needs flatwork versus curbwork? I mean, how does that work in a budget? I didn't, I didn't look at.
Sure. Yeah, so, it'll depend on what the, what is necessary, what was demoed essentially at, at each specific site. So, that's why it's set up as a task order with the, with various different bid items to choose from. So, for instance, if they were to go in and have to remove a section of curb and two sidewalk panels, we can set up a task order for that amount of work.
And they've already got, you already got a price?
Price.
On that type of work?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this mostly utility funded, then? Because this is water work and other stuff, or is it some of a general fund, or is it mostly out of the water and sewer utilities?
It'll end up being broken down by, or paid for by who is responsible for, or who would have been responsible for the restoration. So, in our budget lines, we've got $25,000 of the O-23 fund, the non-recurring general fund, 108 thou, or, sorry, excuse me, 75,000 from the 108 Street Maintenance Fund, 150,000 from the Water Utility Fund, and 25,000 from the Sewer Utility Fund.
Where's Black Forest Finishes at?
In town.
In town, great.
All right, any other questions for Jacob? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the city council to award the construction contract for the on-call concrete flatwork, Project Number SW-18-07, to Black Forest Finishes in the amount of 136,895, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Poyer, second by councilmember Kulaus, to award the contract for on-call concrete flatwork, Project Number SW, excuse me, 18-07, to Black Forest Finishes, in the amount of 136,895, and authorize the mayor to sign construction contract documents. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. Who's our annexation expert? Glenn, is that you? I know we had to fall. So, this is a new annexation, so we'll see it eight times?
Hopefully not.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a 10% annexation petition for submitted by Stephen and Tonya Tramp, Tramp, Heather. This is a small parcel of land, and it is to the west of Skyline Drive and Millardale Block, Millardale Block A. It does not have street frontage, it's bordered to the south and west by the urban growth area, to the north by currency limits, and to the east by undeveloped land that fronts Skyline Drive. If you recall, in 2017, we made a minor modification in our urban growth area in partnership with the county. They're the lead on urban growth area member amendments, and the county and the city both amended our plan to bring this area into our planning area. There'd been a boundary disagreement between the Tramps and another property, and this area was, by the judicial agreement, was brought into their property. And so, this is a, an amendment to, to include this into their site, so the annexation would essentially make them whole, bring their entire parcel into the city. As far as evaluating the values, there was, there's insufficient values to bring in the vacant parcel that's not in the city adjacent. Staff would propose that the city, that the council consider accepting the, the boundary as proposed, proposed just with a single property owner, and adopt the zoning and that the parcel would require the assumption of existing city indebtedness, and would stand for any questions you might have at this time.
Is the property under $2 million?
This property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Valued at $1,200 under the county's.
May not even be subject to the BRB process.
Oh.
Then we won't see it eight times, we won't see it.
Just six.
Six or seven.
Try to limit that as much as possible.
Okay. All right, thank you, Glenn. Council, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the annexation boundary proposed in the 10% annexation petition for the proposed annexation area located in the unincorporated area within the urban growth boundary, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as residential moderate, and require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Got a motion by councilmember Huffaker, and a second by councilmember Kulaus, to approve the annexation boundary proposal in the 10% annexation petition for the proposed annexation area located in unincorporated area within the urban growth boundary, to require the adoption of proposed zoning regulations as set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as residential moderate, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city.
Oh, can staff make a minor clarif, point of clarification? The zoning is actually residential foothills low?
Noted as residential foothills low.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. And require the assumption of existing indebtedness to the city to be annexed, known as the Tramp Annexation?
Do you need to start over?
No, we're good. I think they got it figured out. Discussion?
Is that, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
That black line on our map there, is that the urban growth line?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the urban growth area.
Okay, thank you. Right, correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Mayor's report, uh, since the last time we met, which was in regular session, um, uh, we did do the groundbreaking for Met Hall Park on Saturday, the eleventh, um, we've had a number of, uh, meetings regarding the foothills, I know council member Koulas wasn't here last week, but I hope you got that updated information in your packet, and I'll sit down and chat with you about that at some point in time. Um, I did sit in a homeless steering committee meeting, um, there's been some discussion about how our homeless funds are getting spent, uh, meeting with the county, and just sort of governance, and, um, we're gonna need some work from our city attorney, I need to know who ultimately has the authority to approve the allocation of funds, whether that's done by this committee, the steering committee, or whether the City of Wenatchee Council has the ultimate authority, 'cause there may be some discussions as how that sort of gets spent. So, if you wouldn't mind spending a little bit of time. In the past, there's been a steering committee, and we just have adopted everything the steering committee has recommended, now the steering committee is full of elected officials, and so it, it's starting to change a little bit, so.
There's actually like three pots of money, it comes from different sources.
Yes.
Each one can be used in different ways.
But ultimately, the city and the two counties have contractually said, City of Wenatchee, you're in charge of the homeless plan, and we do the homeless plan, I understand the buckets.
I get a sense that the county's pulling back a little bit, saying, do you wanna control some of this money?
It, I think it's a little bit of what pots do they go in, and for me, it's, again, it's ultimately who has the responsibility. I know we, these are city contracts, and if the steering committee says we wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars on X, and the council says we wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars on Y, does our council trump, because we, because they've given us the authority to do that, the steering committee?
Yeah, so that'll depend on that contract.
Yeah, I.
I think we're working on that.
Okay, well, you got the, you're working on a new contract that helps spells it out, meanwhile, we're gonna see this stuff long before that new contract's adopted. Right?
So, there's gonna be some conflict.
I just sort of wanna know. I, I think there's enough sort of going on there that, um, we did have a, a phone call with Drew Shirck at the governor's office last week and chatted with him, um, if, uh, there's been some internal meetings regarding the triad development around the Clinton property. Um, this week, we did meet with the school district to talk about the, um, going across the spring water property, so we gave them some options, we'll be meeting with the school board in a couple of weeks. Uh, there is an appraisal that's out there, um, that appraises the road, which is very narrow, and I think is in that hundred thousand dollar range, then there's an appraisal that's got room for some houses, that's in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, and then if we want the entire hillside, it's in the six hundred thousand dollar range, and I told them that we wouldn't pay for the hillside if they were gonna put restrictions on development, but it's gonna become hiking trails and that sort of thing, I said, we don't, we don't pay for that, so we would maintain it in the long term, but we won't pay for it. So, we're sort of having a little bit of discussion, we're gonna meet with the school board, I think, and so hopefully, we'll get to some sort of resolution, uh, most likely not under, uh, Brian Fonas' regime, but it'll probably be under the next superintendent's, um, seems like most things, they're sort of waiting for the new superintendent to get in town. Um, other than that, Allison, we, we did have a public works barbecue, so I barbecued hamburgers and hot dogs along with Rob for all the public works folks on a Wednesday, so that was, uh, really nice. I did, uh, had a meeting yesterday, uh, it's not, uh, now that they're gone, so as we know, Microsoft and the Shlain County PUD have a contract for the PUD to provide power to the Redmond headquarters of, uh, Microsoft, uh, hundred percent green electricity from either wind, solar, or our hydro dams, and so Microsoft was in town, so I had a couple hour meeting with them, just sort of getting to know you with some of the other mayors and friends from the port, and the Shlain County PUD folks, so that was a very good meeting, uh, super smart, uh, great people. Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna be meeting with some folks regarding Blue Zone, I don't know if you guys are aware of what Blue Zone is, but it's a, sort of a national, um, program on making healthy communities, so this one person went and studied the five communities with the longest life, and one's in California, one's in China, one's in, and sort of studied what makes people live a long time, and they figured out there's four or five things, some of it's just community, um, uh, healthy eating, there's a bunch of stuff that's sort of worked into that, so there's been some discussion with Columbia Valley Community Health, Confluence Health, the city, about would we try to become a Blue Zone project in our area? So, this is sort of a preliminary discussion as to whether or not we would sort of look at that as trying to become a healthier sort of overall community. Um, if you wanna have lunch tomorrow, the little local hotel barbecue for the building is tomorrow at eleven thirty, and I'll be doing, uh, the Memorial Day stuff on Monday. Allison, add to that.
Um, so we wanted to verify, uh, schedules.
Yeah, so if you wouldn't mind, we, we have, I think, some pretty heavy lifting this summer, uh, development agreement with Mr. Widener, perhaps, and a few other major deals, I know that, uh, a couple of us are gonna be going to Washington DC at some point, a couple of us are going to Masawa, Japan, so I, if you could just get your sort of summer schedules to Tammy, so we can sort of help arrange scheduling, that would be very helpful, if you know you're already be gone, and certain meetings would really help us, uh, with scheduling. Uh, I've not heard, we're still working on the Parkside deal to try to get the money from Douglas County, um, that will be, uh, that will still be interesting, and something that you guys ultimately will have to improve in some form or another, and it changes daily, so I don't know how to give you an update, other than, um, there's mold in the building, and we're fixing the mold in the building, and we're anticipating that we will get paid back, so, um, Finance Committee's aware of it, as is, I think, the Public Works Committee, I don't know if the council members Huffaker and Koulas are aware of that, but, um, we're dancing quietly and trying to make all that sort of happen. Anything else to add?
Uh, we have our consultant in town next Thursday for the kickoff of the Convention Center market analysis.
Okay.
So, tour, lunchtime meeting, couple of stakeholder interviews, so we'll get them started.
Sales tax was out today, it was decent for March, I think the Star Report showed a really good hotel month, uh, I've been to the Hilton a couple of times just for a beer, I think they're doing great during the week, a little slow on weekends yet, but I think they're doing a nice job. Um, got two new wine tasting rooms, Ran's in for a new one, Crayle's in for a new one, haven't been to the Five Oh Nine Brewery yet, Beer Works?
Yeah.
That's new, uh, lots of good sort of exciting, fun things happening in downtown.
Yeah, Five Oh Nine's really nice, I was gonna think that's great.
What were you doing there?
Doing the opportunity.
Oh, I thought you were going there for a beer.
Well, I had a beer too.
Opportunity, yeah, it was an opportunity to have a beer, yeah. All right, council members?
Today, um, at Wenatchee Rotary, uh, was announced where the proceeds of, uh, Wenatchee Rotary Club's latest auction were going, and, and obviously, in addition to Rotary Park, I believe it was thirty thousand dollars allocated to the Lincoln Park, uh, BMX or Pump Track.
Oh, good.
From Wenatchee Rotary, which is not asking to have Lincoln Park renamed.
Right.
On that, I did ask, uh, the folks that are the park coordinators to give me just kind of a general idea of hours and money that Rotary has put into Rotary Park, something that we might discuss when we talk to other groups about them wanting to take on sponsorships of things, and, and kind of maybe develop some measure of expectations for naming rights, and that, not saying that anyone's gonna equal Rotary Park, but just to get an idea of what the city's investment has been versus the, the nonprofit investment. Um, last week, I was not here, I was attending the Transportation Improvement Board meeting, and, um, uh, the, a call for projects will be going out, uh, for the various, various funds that, that the city can participate in, including about seventy million dollars available in the urban arterial program, um, and so, that's something for, um, our engineering folks to be aware of, and then also, I talked with Tammy, the board is meeting here in September, and I had her put that on your calendar to do.
Excellent.
To, to the welcome, and, and they generally look for, they'll, they'll, there's, most things should be centered around the Hilton Garden Inn, um, and then they're always looking for dining recommendations, you know, so.
I've heard very positive things about the food at the Hilton Garden Inn as well, but, yeah, their dinner menu is good, and their breakfast menu is good.
They are, they are doing a, a dinner.
Yeah, they got a dinner menu, I was in there for a, a glass of wine, 'cause I was following Lyle, of course, I wanted to go there on my own, I knew Lyle might be there, so, and there was a number of people in there having dinner, uh, even locals, some local families that I knew that were in, having, having food, so.
I was surprised at the size of their kitchen, I did a tour of the kitchen when we did the tour, I got, got, we had to do a tour of kitchen, and their countertop is only about this big, which is really small for me, I thought, for a kitchen, and same with the grill, but they do have one oven, they can program to do anything. It's just amazing.
Was the kitchen, I mean, I thought it was kind of an afterthought, 'cause they weren't originally gonna do.
Yeah.
A dinner menu or anything, it was just gonna be a breakfast menu.
Yeah.
I was kind of surprised when I heard that they had done that.
Yeah. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Anybody else? All right, so.
Land Douglas Health?
Yes, give us a quick update on that.
So, a group has approached Land Douglas Health, and they've asked permission to present to the board an idea on a needle exchange program. This would be an idea where somebody could bring a dirty needle in and turn it in, and they would be given a clean needle to use, and the group's idea behind that is, is that maybe they can reach out to this person and get some help for them, um, but there's a lot of mixed feelings about it, and I can tell you that the board, for the most part, was pretty opposed to it. We will probably still have the group in and hear them out, but I'd like you should be aware of that.
Yeah, and it is one of the things that I hear a lot about, is this homelessness, mental illness, what are we doing, right? Please don't become Seattle, those sorts of things, so I think our, our valley is asking us to be very cognizant of those sorts of things, and making sure that, and our police officers do a tremendous job, and our mental health folks do a tremendous job, as we know, it's there and it's out there, and we just gotta be careful.
And this followed on the heels of the report that Spokane had such a huge, uh, drug use problem.
Yeah.
And you look at the numbers behind that and how they calculated it out, well, it's because Spokane is actually enforcing things, and Seattle is turning a blind eye, so they don't record near as many as Spokane does.
Right.
It's, it's one of those things, you really have to look at all the details and the, yeah, what are we, what are we doing?
Yeah.
Where are we going? So, if anybody has any input that they would like to give me on that, I would be more than welcome to hear.
Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the order, so we don't meet next week, we don't meet the week after, so I think it's the thirteenth or something will be our next time in regular session, so everyone have a great Memorial Day, and, uh, we're adjourned.